Good morning. Welcome to our July 28, 2015 Board of Supervisors meeting for Calaveras County. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Al, could you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'd like to welcome Mike Olivera back. Needless to say, we missed him quite a bit, quite a bit here, and we're happy to see him right back up here with us. That's great.
Thank you very much. It's good to be back. I want to thank the board members for carrying on in public for the prayers and phone calls I got while I was disposed. It's good to be back, folks.
And also yesterday, got to see Megan's baby. She was here, Megan, our county council, and baby looks just like her. She's really great. So they're both doing well. All right, so we're going to move into public comments. And so public comments will be, how many people will speak in public comments today? One, two, three? Three? Okay. Four? So we can have five minutes for public comments? So any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is deemed, I mean determined, to be an emergency of the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the consent agenda. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued at the conclusion of the regular agenda in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. Thanks, Shirley. I was still cooking, so I had to get here. So public comments, please.
Good morning. My name's Bonnie Newman from Double Springs. And just call attention to everyone that 25 years ago, the American Disabilities Act was signed into effect by President George Bush, who proclaimed at that time, "Let this shameful wall of exclusion finally come tumbling down." The intent of the law was to protect people with disabilities from discrimination, enable them to participate fully in the workplace and in their communities. 25 years later, much has been done. I happened to see on the news last night that one agency that has been allocated $2 billion to employ disabled people has been misusing the money, and less than 20 percent of their employees nationwide are truly disabled people. So as much as this bill is intended to do good, once again, we see a lot of mismanagement and cheating. One thing that is going to be happening is two bills are introduced in California, one in the Senate and one in the Assembly, designed to modify the American Disability Act in California, which now can fine a business $5,000 and give them 20, 60 days to bring their facility into compliance. The bills are designed to minimize the fine, I believe, to $1,000, and allow the business to have 120 days to come into compliance. Because what has happened is a bunch of unscrupulous lawyers have seen a way to make money off of this legislation, and they find a couple of disabled people and convince them it's a good idea to go to business after business after business. And we've seen it and heard about it and read about it in the paper where businesses are closed down because, especially in rural counties, we have ancient buildings which have steps and things that are not accessible. So the intent of the whole thing is to provide access and awareness, not to penalize and hurt people and close small businesses. So keep that in mind when these bills come up, and remember that handicapped people have come a long way, and there's a long way to go. Thank you.
Any more public comments?
Councilor Gall, Taxpayer Association, we agree with Bonnie. There's been a lot of abuse on that law. Although making provisions for and removing barriers for handicapped people is a good thing, hindsight tells us that perhaps it wasn't a constitutional function of the federal government. There's nowhere in the Constitution where the federal government has the responsibility or the authority to mandate local building codes or things of that nature. Someday, our society will become more aware of the constitutional limitations, and those things will change. On a positive side, the Taxpayer Association is going to have its annual barbecue, which will include a forum for public officials, and we'll be talking about current affairs. And this will be on October, I mean August 29th, at the same place that Steve Fairchild's property near Moaning Cavern. We'll have a news release out about that. Our main speaker is going to be George Runner with the Board of Equalization. He's an excellent speaker, and he's been fighting real hard to, on behalf of the taxpayer, and especially in the, some of the abuses that the state government has done, such as the fire tax. So it promises to be an excellent meeting, and we hope that those that care about local affairs would want to attend. Thank you.
Al, what time is that barbecue scheduled for?
It's five to eight.
Good morning. I'm Thomas Reeves, your liaison to Pacific Gas and Electric, and I've met with a couple of you individually. I'd love the opportunity to meet with all of you at some point just to hear your thoughts on PG&E's work in the county and anything we can do better, and the status of projects that are in your community. Although we've got mainly electric in Calaveras County, we do have almost five miles of gas transmission pipeline in Calaveras County, and so we will be, in the coming weeks, meeting with your county administrator to talk about incompatible vegetation that might be on top of those pipelines. And again, it's only about five miles worth of pipeline in your community, but we will be meeting to talk about safety on that gas pipeline. And also, we have been working with your sheriff's office and Captain Macedo on ensuring that we have a plan for emergencies that come up, so that PG&E and your county can work seamlessly on ensuring that there's restoration for your power. And so we do feel we have a very good plan in place with your sheriff's office, and Captain Macedo's been great working with us. And I've already heard of some projects that you would like updates on, but if there's anything else that I can ever do for you in terms of being that liaison to the company, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other public comments?
Save the best for last, folks. Good morning. Nice to see everybody's smiling faces. I'm glad the planning department is not on the agenda, so I thought I may fill up the space with some of my comments. We've been working on this general plans for a long time now, for many, many years, for a great amount of money. I would be more than happy, but nobody ever said that, hey, everybody claims they're taking what people want. There's a simple solution, folks. Put it on the damn ballot. So all the advocates of both directions, let them put their money where it's. Maybe they learned a lesson from a past election and agreed the right way. We made some steps, the right direction, and I'm very happy, even though some of you I don't always agree with, but I do have a great respect. For all the 10 years I've been coming in here, and I've been hearing all this double talk and BS, you folks are the first ones to say, hey, that was a mistake, and you corrected it. I have more respect for you, those folks. Now, I'm not going to go through this in five minutes, but whatever I can finish, I'll be putting it on social networks like Facebook and et cetera. I just happened to pick out one of these. ECLI, they have something to do with you folks, isn't it? This was supposed to be the program from 2010 to 2015. Local Government for Sustainability: Preparing for Tomorrow. Well, they've been having their ways a little bit, more or less. Look around your county. Look around the state. Aren't you doing great? Don't you feel better today than you did 10 years ago, 20 years ago? But all these people who are going to help us. Let me read something. Our advocacy, that's the program, that's the propaganda. And I believe most of you, if not all of you, are genuinely sincere folks. ECLI serves as a global entry point for cities, local government, engaged with the United Nations as international, national policy process. Don't you feel better now that the United Nations on Agenda 21, you can be the forefront to implicate that? Advocate increase of powers and access to revenue by local government with United Nations and government. Boy, that United Nations is a very generous establishment, isn't it? Doesn't it make you feel good that you're going along with the United Nations? Advocate direct access to climate finance and other funds by local government in inversion of climate finance mechanism to enable and implement a need to drive local development. How much money have you seen? Is that coming from the state? Is that just regional nonprofit stakeholders? They must be very bashful that they don't want to... Who they are, what they are? Where are they getting all this good money that they want to spend with you folks? ECLI, its initial campaign and program have evolved to cover broader range of themes, which includes municipal planning and management, sustainability management, land use development, climate change adoption, and resilience management procurement. Well, there's a big English word, so you might have to translate it for me. Because of my time limitation. Policy innovation, local Agenda 21. I don't hear any word laughing behind me this time. Local Agenda 21 was stakeholders, involvement, green economy, security, and social development. Doesn't it make you feel good? ECLI will tell you what your social response, hey, let's redefine family. Oh, you already put it in there. Every one of your general plan, they will redefine family for you.
30 seconds.
Thank you. Either they think you're a dumbass, that you don't know what the family is, or they're giving you a whole bunch of line, of bull manure that hasn't been dried yet. Other initiative programs, projects that in event will be organized and offered on regional, national level. Use the opportunity of Rio + 23rd Summit, Rio de Janeiro, in the year 2012, opportunity to review and affect the need for local sustainability and be advised. Folks, they don't kiss you first. I guarantee you that much. And I don't believe I'm that such a dumbass, because I do have a family I love very much. Sometimes I like to kill them, but thank God, they gave me some wonderful grandkids that I can spoil the hell out of them. And I think I know what the family is. I want what I got. I came to this country with a sweatpants on me that the Red Cross gave me. I appreciate it, and I know the difference between a communal project and a cooperative project.
Okay, Peter. Thank you.
You're more than welcome. Thank you.
Joe Kelly, PG&E being here brought a thought to mind. When Ms. Callaway and Mr. Spellman were here, there was a tear rate that was purchased for the jail and the sheriff's office. I'd like to get a report back on how well that's doing, so we can have an idea what kind of cost savings were actually being accrued by that, if any. Number two, in your balanced budget info from now on, how about providing us with how many people were laid off and in the year before possibly, or that year, however it works, rehired and then department transferred, and then another layoff to balance the budget of that year? That would be transparency. Then we have, I read this morning, Prop 13 is under another massive attack. They want to go back to before Prop 13 was put in, and all our property taxes go up so high that people are losing their homes to the tax man. Great, California, real fine place to live anymore. And then the last issue, Calpers is in bigger trouble than previously thought. Question is, how will the county create funds to fund Calpers for its mistakes? It's going up. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments?
Bill McMasse, Calaveras Project. While we're talking about ADA or when it came up, I've encountered several instances in the county where the county has advocated its authority and responsibility to preserve and enforce ADA requirements. So what happens is when the county doesn't do it, we don't do it at the local level, people are forced to go someplace else. When you go to the feds with an ADA complaint, many times, you're intercepted by attorneys who can pick up that case, and they do get a bounty or a fee or whatever you want to call it. But it's the only way that people who have disabilities can have their voice and concerns addressed. And it may be an ugly system, but that's just the way it works. So perhaps if the county would take a more serious approach to enforcing ADA in this county, we could keep it local and not have these types of things happening within our county. And that's it for ADA. Just as a note, I wanted to give a shout out via our public TV to some people in Murphy's. As you may know, the dispensary in Murphy's, the application was withdrawn. It caused a huge uproar in town. And during that process, three business people, property owners, were approached by people wanting to rent or purchase their properties to open a pot shop. All three of these people, who remain anonymous, refused to sell or rent in the spirit of keeping our community someplace we'd like to live, and turned down all requests for those operations. So they know who they are, I know who they are, and I just want to say thank you publicly to them. Those are the kinds of citizens that make our county great. The last issue I'm sure you're all aware of, you're probably getting emails, is the uncontrolled industrial scale growing of marijuana in this county. I get lots of calls, the organization gets lots of calls, and the question, there's two questions that are asked all the time. What can we do about it, and how did this happen? The answer is the same, both questions. While there's very little we can do, because we don't have an ordinance, it revolves back into code compliance or something else that gets lost in county council. It just seems to disappear someplace. So what I tell the people, the answer, like I say, is the same to both questions. What do you do about it? Contact the board. Why did it happen? The Board of Supervisors. In April, when you decided to do nothing, a huge green light was lit to encourage the unrestricted, unregulated, industrial quantity growing of marijuana in this county. And like I tell the people, there's only one group that can change it, and that's the Board of Supervisors. You guys started it, you need to finish it. So I hope that doesn't sound harsh, but that just happens to be the truth, and that's what I tell people. Other than that, there's very little we can do to help them. It's up to you folks to do it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. So any members of the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Number four, please.
Any others? Any board members wish to remove an item? No? No? Okay. All right. Peter? Oh, wait.
Make a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda.
Thank you, sorry.
A second.
So we have a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda items by Supervisor Wright and a second by Supervisor Ponte. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Five zero. Haven't said that in a while. Thanks, Mike. All right. So Peter.
As a general comment, when it does not affect your general fund, you have been away from your neighbors that you do know that they're still paying for, even though it's not general fund, grants. Okay. If you folks, just look at me, I'm going to make an ass out of myself. What's the name of this person who's getting $3,585 a month? Don't cheat. You were going to approve it, five years, you're going to approve it. It's a great person. $3,585 a month of your taxpayers' money. Who is he? When was the last time he talked to you?
His name is Dr. Kaleida, and he's our public health officer and has been for quite a few years.
See, there are some genuine, intelligent, very attractive, wonderful lady. The point I'm trying to make, it's nice to put somebody... Did you read this whole thing?
Yes, I did, but I wasn't sure how to pronounce his last name, so I'm thankful that she told us.
Okay. When was the last time he talked to you? Thank you. That's my point.
About two weeks ago.
He came back from the board meeting?
No. Not in the public.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This might be a procedural thing. In reading the agenda submittal, I see in the recommendation, it says a 35-month period of August 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2016. Is that a typo in there?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Good.
That was a good catch.
Thought my math was going south on me.
Got a comment on the item?
Yes.
Would it be possible to have an annual report where the doctor would indicate what he did during that year? And that way, the taxpayers will know that, again, there's money's worth. Thank you.
Any other public comments on the issue? Mary? Any comments from you?
Dr. Kaleida has been the public health officer since about 2000, and he provides consultation services for the health department and actually for most of the county government. He also provides it for the environmental office as well. And he's on basically call 24/7. That's part of the issue with his, and why we revised his contract, is because of that. He is, you know, there are times even during his regular private practice that our nurses are sitting in his office waiting to talk to him because of various issues. And so we find that he's been more than amenable all of these years to provide those services for us. He also provides a number of educational services in our community that are very much needed. And we, he can also, just to let you know, some of the things in general, he can talk about, but some things he may not be able to, obviously because of HIPAA. Does that answer all the questions?
Actually, that's very minimal, but Dr. Kaleida is an asset to Calaveras County in the services that he provides in the leadership and direction for public health.
Yes. Well, I was trying to make, you have an agenda yet, so I was just trying to make it easy. Other questions?
Any other public comments?
Make a motion to approve?
Okay.
A second. Go ahead, Mike. I'll second.
All right. So we have a motion by Supervisor Ponte, a second by Supervisor Olivera to approve number four, but with the change of the date. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? None. So it's five zero. All right. So now we're going to move on to our regular agenda. On this, number one is public hearing, so I'll have to open a public hearing. And the intention here is to, we're going to table this until September 22nd, but I'd like to hear public comments, any questions that you may have as a part of this, the process for the formation of the RCD. And then on the 22nd, we will have a study session with experts here, and, you know, so that we can get some of those questions answered, and also try to vent this thing out so that the public actually understands it more. So it reads, "Hold a public hearing with possible adoption of resolution of application request in the Calaveras Local Agency Formation Commission that proceeds for formation of a Resource Conservation District, RCD, in Calaveras County with boundaries to... contiguous with the county boundary." And so I'm going to close our regular meeting and open our public hearing now, and then ask for public comments. So here we are. This is public comments on RCD.
Joe Kelly, I support the concept of the RCD. I think the storm water that does damage can be turned into recharge of groundwater without destroying ag land. Water recharge, best use of ag and forest lands. Storm water retention or detention, choose the best description of the day. Hopefully, the RCD will relieve fish and game from its Calaveras County-induced inability to enforce its codes in Calaveras County. That would be Fish and Game Code 1602. I am interested in how the RCD might be able to restore my tree count for an olive orchard from 1984, trees originally, dropping 185 trees for house shop staging area to 1799 trees, and a loss due to flooding of 171 trees, dropping to 628 trees. trees remaining. Tree plantings of the, are in a drought planting spacing of twenty-foot rows, twenty feet between the trees. Yes, Calaveras County pits agriculture against agriculture. The property is in the National Wetlands Registry as a pre-emergent freshwater wetlands. The RCD will have to become knowledgeable of the Highway Four Wagon Trail Project, location of Highway Four in Nassau Creek, now and when the new bridge is built, to monitor volume and velocity of watershed runoff. I am supportive of the RCD and will assist by providing ten years of gathered information, including aerial photographs of the subject area from nineteen-forty-four, nineteen-fifty-four, nineteen-fifty-nine, and nineteen-sept- nineteen-sixty-nine, and nineteen-seventy-seven, which seventy-seven shows there was no water retention, illegal water retention facility obstruction in Nassau Creek. And going on to nineteen-eighty-four, the first aerial photo showing the illegal water retention facility obstruction in Nassau Creek, a violation of Fish and Game Code I think I just offered the first RCD project. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Jerry Howard, I live in Mountain Ranch. I had the honor and privilege of serving as the Calaveras County Agricultural Commissioner from nineteen-eighty to nineteen, to two-thousand-and-five. During that twenty-five-year period, we piggybacked on to Amador County's RCD for some invasive weed project funding, but on a very minimal basis. And I applaud those who have at least brought this topic up for discussion. I think Calaveras County has been long overdue to have an RCD established, and, Mr. Chairman, I compliment you on at least moving this to a study session and getting more information out there. I think it's sorely lacking in the community what an RCD does and is, and time for that discussion has arrived. I think our agricultural community and others have been at a significant loss of potential revenue sources to do some conservation and water development projects that we need in this county. Thank you.
Al Segala Taxpayer Association, and there's some ideas with this, or with the RCD are pretty good, and there's also some areas that are danger. The way, the way we see it, we like to keep government limited. That means that things that this new entity would do would not infringe on property rights and would not disrupt our, our economy, or to attempt to manipulate the economy to such an extent that our private sector can no longer function. A case in point is sometime back, there was quite a campaign against our timber industry in California, very successful campaign, wiped out maybe eighty percent of logging in the, in the Sierras. The consequences of that have just been terrible. Connecting the consequences with a cause is almost nonexistent in the media, nonexistent. The, the way that, 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 that this happened was by removing even age harvesting, which is the latest techniques in forest management, which allow the trees to be evenly spaced so that they, they're healthy, and that the, the snow can, snow can gather in the shadows, was eliminated. And with that came a tremendous growth of, of fuels with random natural planning of trees closely spaced that just turned into be a tinderbox. And all this was known at the time, but it was ignored. So, in establishing another level of government, if, if, if we would do this, we need to keep in mind that the private sector already has solutions to some of the major problems we have, such as increasing water retention and also fire prevention, as well as increasing our economy with, with more jobs that are tied to the timber industry. So, we need to, to look to the timber industry to, as much as possible, resume their role that they traditionally had, yet bearing in mind that we need to also protect the environment. So, the taxpayers would look at this in a conservative way and want to make sure that we're not interrupting our natural economy, particularly the timber industry, and that we are not intruding on property rights. If that can be accomplished, there's some educational things that could be very beneficial that would connect to this. We would, you know, we applaud that. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Good morning. My name is Bob Dean, I'm a resident of District Two. I think an RCD is of critical importance to the future of Calaveras County and to the future of agriculture in Calaveras County. I've been involved to a certain extent in, in trying to discuss and, and reach out to those parties who would have an interest in having an RCD in Calaveras County. And I was concerned, and you know, that, that cliff that I, when I sent an email to you, I said that I felt that this was premature. There has to be buy-in from the county, there has to be buy-in from LAFCO as part of the process, but I really would love to see the opportunity of bringing this to the different interests in agriculture and conservation in Calaveras County before we, before we move and, and actually go through the governance procedure that we're gonna have to follow in order to make this happen. And there's been some confusion about how we can go about doing it. But nonetheless, I think that this thing is getting the kind of traction it needs to, to come to some form of successful conclusion. And I'm, I'm, I appreciate what the, the board has done and the interest that they've exhibited. I just wanna work closely and see that this becomes and maintains and retains the collaborative process so that, so that there are no questions going down the road, that, that the opportunity for people to, to give criticism, both positive and negative, can be heard, and when this thing is formed, there'll be a substantial community base to support this and get it going. Interestingly enough, I had a conversation with John Mills on Friday. He called me on the phone and he said, "We have a problem with the RCD in Calaveras." And I asked him why, why this is the case, and he said, "The IRWM process through their drought legislation and drought funding has presented, or has given to the Tuolumne County RCD, I think in excess of four million dollars to address conservation projects, conservation education, and that kind of thing." The fact that there is no RCD at this point in time in Calaveras County, the, the, the process devolved to the Tuolumne RCD, and I was told that through conversations at DWR, that if we had, if we formed an RCD before the money was distributed, that Calaveras County would be eliminated for many of the benefits of that, of that grant funding. I don't know how true it is, I have no reason to suspect it, but, but at the same time, I don't have the information. I've been trying to get to the bottom of this, but I just don't have the information. So, I, I think, in, in fact, taking our time may be a benefit to us because a percentage of that money has been allocated for, for conservation projects in Calaveras County. And that leads me to another, another point, which is, is not part of the agenda, but it's something that I really wish you would consider and bring back from discussion and concern, and that is participation in the Tuolumne Stanislaus IRWM. I know the last board withdrew from it, and I, and I felt at the time that it was a mistake. I think that it was an issue of being penny wise and pound foolish, because we would have been actively engaged, when I say we, I mean Calaveras County, would have been actively engaged in the discussion revolving around this, this presentation of, of drought money, and we wouldn't be faced with this potential elimination if that's indeed the case. I know this is, it's probably confusing, it's just as confusing to me, and I've had some conversations, but I think it's something we need to keep in mind, and I really would like to see you agenda as a discussion on possibly participating or re, rejoining the Tuolumne Stanislaus, because I think, well, the bottom line is the Stanislaus River, despite the fact that it, its headwaters are mostly in Tuolumne County, is probably gonna be the most important river in Calaveras County for our future. We have the greatest number of, of water rights, we, we own the, the New Spice Reservoir, which means that we do have some, some opportunity to impound water, whether, whether that'll ever come back for consumptive use, I don't know, but the fact nonetheless remains that we have no control over the McCollum, we have marginal control over the Calaveras, but it has its problems, fine. And, but, but the, but the Stanislaus River is, is a critically important river, and we need to, to be on top of that, and participating in the IRWM would go a long way. Thank you.
Any other comments on the RCD? So, I'm, I'm the one that push, is pushing this hard forward, and, and, you know, I guess people can say that maybe it's too fast, but, you know, I'm looking at our county and it moves pretty slow. I've never actually experienced any business or anything moving this slow as far as the economy goes, and, you know, and how we can improve it. I, you know, I've identified myself, and, and I'm sure others have too, but just me thinking, many different areas in which our county can improve. Our, in our base industry, as far as I'm concerned, is agriculture in our county. That's what we have. Our next industry is tourism, which is like a roller coaster. So, agriculture is, is one of the things that we need to concentrate on to bolster and, and make it all it can be. We, as a government here at the county, can't really do much about that. What we are here is basically a, a place where people go to process paperwork and, and, and permits and things like that. That's what we do here. So, an RCD is that exterior group that can help with moving us in the right direction and helping our county get some of the, some of the projects and funding that is needed to be able to bolster, bolster our agriculture. So, and we're gonna learn a lot more about it on September twenty-second, because we'll have a, a study session. I know that, you know, that there's some people that called, they're afraid of this, or, you know, a little bit intimidated by it, or some people got their feelings hurt in many cases, because, you know, I'm, I'm kind of a person, like, if I, if I pick up a football, I like to run with it, can't run as good as I used to, but, but I like to get things done. And I don't think in many cases that we need to wait five or six or ten years to do things. We're here and now, our economy is terrible, and we have the opportunity to do something about that, I'd like to take the opportunity to do it in the right way. So, I'd like to give the board an opportunity to speak on that if they want. We are gonna table this, we're not gonna vote on it today, it'll be tabled until September twenty-second. We'll have a study session, there'll be people here, hopefully from the state, and I'm sure Robert will be able to bring a bunch of folks to, to educate us. Robert actually was the one that held, he held a meeting in January, Bob Dean, held a, a meeting in January to present the RCD. I got pretty excited about it, and it just, I didn't hear anything for a while, and I, and so that I do what I do, I just took, took, took action on it and got it rolling. So, and it'll go through the process, you know, we're not, like, forcing anything, we're just, we're just getting the process moving, so, so that we can learn more about it. Anybody?
Yeah, just a couple comments. So, you know, I'm in support of pursuing this and seeing where it leads us. The only thing I ask is that, you know, when we talk about all of Calaveras County, in my district, I have the City of Angels camp, I see where they're included in this, on the map, and I wanna make sure that they have a voice at some point as a, as a governmental agency, and, and finding out more about this and, and having a voice as well as a vote on this.
Yeah, you know, I got, I got a nastygram from, well, it wasn't really a nastygram, but kinda, from city manager, and I apologize for that. But, you know, that's what brings out things. I, I wouldn't have known even anyhow, so it brings it out, we get to deal with it. I've asked to, to get on their agenda in, in Angels so that I can ask them cordially if they would be interested. Again, we'll have the study sessions and the public comment, and I think that's what we need to do, but, like I said, I don't think things need to take, you know, too many years to get something good going here in the county, and I'd like to get it going.
I, I've been able to keep up, although in my absence, to what's been happening in the county, and one of these issues was the RCD proposed by Chairman Hetson, and I totally support your position in this, and I do agree with Supervisor Ponte about including City of Angels, 'cause it is in that geographical foundation. Once again, I do share the concept of, of moving forward, acting on issues, although being cautious to the pitfalls in doing that. So, yes, I, I support the RCD and looking forward to the study session, and I would inquire to any involved parties or interested parties that they attend that, that study session, 'cause that's the best way that we have a chance to, to listen to what the folks in our county want. Of course, we have our own private media, telephone, email, Facebook, but one-to-one contact, looking someone in the eyes, and listening to what they say is very important to me when making decisions. So, yes, I support it.
I concur with the previous comments, I support it. I know Supervisor Hetson has put a considerable effort into making this happen, as well as some other efforts that we've heard about today, and I look forward to the study session.
Silence, huh? Okay. So, here's the one that talked me into going to the RCD meeting. But I gotta thank Bob Dean for bringing this forward in the first place in January, and then Dennis Mills also, he's like a prod, cattle prod, so, you know, I, I appreciate the folks that, that are looking out for our county and, and pushing me to. So, you know, we'll get it, we'll get it right, and it's gonna, and it'll be fair and balanced, that's, that's the goal, and it'll be for agriculture, that's the goal. So, and looking forward to meeting with the City of Angels as well. So, I'm gonna close public comments, I mean, I'm gonna close a public hearing now, and we'll resume back to our board supervisors' meeting. So, that, that's clear on what we're doing. Okay, so we're gonna go to item number eight, then. So, item number eight, adopt a resolution, pointing Jason, votes are, Environmental Management Agency Administrator, Air Pollution Control Officer effective July twenty-fifth, two thousand and fifteen.
On July twenty, on July fourteenth, Board of Supervisors had the closed session and voted four-zero, with Supervisor Olivera absent, to appoint Jason as the Environmental Management Agency slash Air Pollution Control Officer effective July twenty-fifth, and directed the administrative office to bring forward a resolution memorializing that. What you have before you today is that resolution.
Okay. Do I have any public comments?
This is gonna be half as good as Mr. Moss.
No answer?
Joe Kelly, another thought that came up under this and number eight, but I'll speak to this one. Mr. Moss also had the animal control- Mr. Moss also had the animal control, where's that going now? Because now it's all being separated out, and it's not being discussed, and here to let us know what's happening to it.
It's remaining under the Environmental Management Agency. The Environmental Management Agency encompasses agriculture, environmental health, air pollution control, animal services, and onsite wastewater.
All right, and I do support the appointment of Jason, only because the man over there twisted my arm, and now I have bursitis. Thank you.
You can probably fix that, too. Okay, any other public comments? Jason?
Jason Bautzer, Environmental Management Agency Administrator and Air Pollution Control Officer, so, I just want to thank the board again for this opportunity, and, and also serving the citizens of Calaveras County. Mr. Howard's in the audience, and he hired me and Brian 13 years ago in August, so it's been a fun ride thus far, and I look forward to continuing serving the citizens in a new capacity, in animal services especially, and the agricultural community, which I previously didn't oversee, so, having, have, working at my grandparents' ranch in Amador County, this will be fun, having that background and interest, too, so, thank you very much.
Okay. Any other public comments here? All right.
With that, I'd make a motion to approve.
All right.
I'll second it.
All right, so we have a motion by Supervisor Ponte, and a second by Supervisor Wright to approve appointing Jason. Vote, sir, to Environmental Management Agency Administrator, Air Pollution Control Officer effective July 25th, 2015. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You're hired.
Mr. Chairman?
Not like we had a choice.
One quick note, if I would have been at that closed session, I would have voted for you, Jason.
We all know you were doing Brian's work for him anyhow.
So how much that costs?
All right. All right, so number nine, we're going to have to, again, change our meeting from the Board of Supervisors meeting to the Air Pollution Control Board, and that's where we are right now, we're in Air Pollution Control Board now. For number nine, resolution appointing the Environmental Management Agency Administrator as the Air Pollution Officer.
And I believe it was April of 2010, a resolution was adopted by the board, appointing the Environmental Management Agency Administrator as the Air Pollution Control Officer. However, that resolution specifically named Brian Moss, who was then the Administrator, as the Air Pollution Control Officer. The attached resolution names the position of Environmental Management Agency Administrator as the Air Pollution Control Officer, so if sometime in the future, much distant future, the, the person in that position changes, that resolution does not have to be revisited.
Okay. Any public comments? Board?
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay.
Second.
Second, so I have a motion by Supervisor Ponte, a second by Supervisor Olivera. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, so, it moves on. And, thank you, Jason, for that responsibility. Yes, so we're going to close the Air Pollution Control Board meeting, and we're going to come back to our Board of Supervisors meeting. Did you notice the change? And then, we're going to take about a
Ten minute break.
Ten minute break here for a second, okay? For 10 minutes. Props and stuff in here, we actually have a policy against that, so could you please, please remove them, thank you.
Where would you like them?
I don't know, they're yours.
Are these in the running yet, too?
Yeah, we actually have them all out.
Yeah, why don't you put them? You want them out?
Yeah, so I'll read that. So, you know, the rules, the county board has procedures, and Rule 47, which I didn't know about until just now. The board has the power to implement security measures in the board chambers and in alternate locations where the board may meet, sign posters, banners, and other hazardous objects, which could impair the safety of individuals in event of an emergency may be prohibited. In a large object container that may be deemed a hazardous object, which could impair the safety of individuals in the event of an emergency, may be also prohibited. All permitted items shall be placed at the direction of the board chair and the board chairs designate. So it already started, you know, it stacked up, first few rows, couldn't even see, that sort of thing, so.
Now, I'm bringing them back in, it's my turn.
Not the big ones.
Okay, I'll take them off.
And, and the thing I worry about that is turning around, poking somebody in the eye, that sort of thing.
Not a problem.
All right, so we have agenda item number 10, presentation by the Calaveras County Economic Development Company, and here we have Dave Jeffords and Bo, and Bob Doten to make their presentation.
Mic's on. Hello? Yeah. Hi, good morning, Supervisors, we appreciate you inviting us here today, we got a short presentation, there will be time for questions afterwards. First, we'd like to introduce ourselves, like Cliff said, I'm Dave Jeffords, President, and that means Bob Doten's Secretary, we've also got Maurice Bennett as Vice President, and Mark Borchen is our Treasurer. What is the EDC? We're a nonprofit, non-political organization. The purpose is to serve Calaveras businesses, residents, and visitors by developing strategies to help promote business growth, increase employment, and provide greater availability of goods and services. How do we do that? To accomplish that mission, we offer solutions of our own, and we also partner with other service organizations that provide economic solutions. Funding, we're funded through grants and donations and fees, we receive no money from Calaveras County, and to put you at ease, we are not here to ask you for any money today. We're here today because we feel like we can accomplish more if we team up, so we want to talk about that. The agenda is very simple, we're going to talk about the CCEDC, our vision and our priorities, what small businesses need, we also want to get better acquainted and share what we've learned and explore the benefits of working together. The vision, our vision is the development of economy where supply and demand are more closely balanced. What that means is, we think that consumers are, will be able to find more of the things they need closer to home, which in turn fuels the small businesses who provide the jobs in the county. Our priorities, to decide where to begin, when we were starting out about a year ago, we met and worked with other economic development agencies in the county, principally the Tuolumne Development Authority. We concluded that attracting out-of-county businesses, it takes the longest, it costs the most, and it creates competition for our local businesses. Meanwhile, helping our existing businesses succeed has a greater payoff. It keeps existing workers employed and creates the possibility that they can create new jobs. In fact, studies show that during periods of economic growth, 80% of the new jobs come from existing businesses, so that's why we're focusing on business retention and expansion, number one up there. And as for the new entrepreneurs, the EDC is establishing itself as a resource and conduit for those who want help getting business started, we can point them in the right direction, and point them to the agencies that have those capabilities. To get us up and going quickly, we've formed a lot of partnerships with these different agencies around the county. Motherlode Job Training has services for the job seeker from entry level to mid-level, and then it also has services for the employer to help them seeking qualified employees. Small Business Development Center down at Delta College is funded through the Labor Department, and they strictly focus on providing services to the small businessman. We're working with them. The Central Sierra Economic Development District is a federally recognized economic development district, it includes Calaveras County, Alpine County, Tuolumne, Mariposa, and the cities of Sonora and Angels Camp. And then, for the chamber, we recently started working with President Mark Borchen and the new executive director there, Stacy Johnson, on common interest projects that we have, they've been very helpful to us. What small businesses need, we started out here in San Andreas on a program that's going to be ongoing, it's going to take a while, but we started walking Main Street, San Andreas, going out, shaking hands with the business owners, going, asking them a few simple questions, you know, about their business, how it's going. What you see up here are the results, and we were heard back over and over again, talking to these shopkeepers, they want to help finding qualified employees, improving their operations, and promoting their business, and particularly when it comes to the internet. And now I'm going to turn it over to Bob, he's going to tell you about the solutions we've assembled that help the county's small business operators. Take it away, Bob.
Thank you, Dave. Small businesses told us that they needed help finding qualified employees, so we partnered up with the Motherlode Job Training, folks, they've got an office right down the hill behind the hospital. We found that most of the shopkeepers with whom we interviewed didn't even know about Motherlode Job Training, or much else in the way of services to help them find qualified employees. As Dave mentioned, Motherlode Job Training offers services for both entry level and mid-level employees. What that means is, at entry level, the kind of folks who need to learn how to dress when they apply for a job, and they need to learn certain courtesies, and how to count change, and how to greet a customer, that sort of thing. The mid-level would take us higher into more work experience in serving in a sub-managerial level, writing a resume to apply for a job, and the like. They also provide a job registry for the employers who are seeking qualified candidates. They can post jobs at mljt.org, and it's like a mini monster.org, or monster.com, and it, it just covers the local area here. In fact, one of our, one of our officers, Mark Borchen from the Glass Doctor of the Gold Country, recently started doing, making a connection with Motherlode Job Training, and after a few weeks of getting settled down, he's now able to acquire people who have the right kind of skills, and on top of it, there's a little side benefit, there's incentives for employers to hire these folks, and up to a certain dollar level, as much as 50% of the employee's paycheck will be paid by grants and other funds, so it's a huge incentive for the businessman as well, and he knows he's getting somebody who's been actually prepped to hire. We did one last thing that we thought was important to help those job seekers who don't know about Motherlode Job Training. It came from an actual anecdotal story about a, one of the businesses we visited, he told us about it, lamented about his problem getting the right kind of employees, and he talked about the day somebody came in, shirt untucked, pants hanging down, looking completely inappropriate, and he says, "Look around the, the store here, look at the customers we have, look at the people who are working here, you don't look like any of them." Well, he sent him away with perhaps a little harsh, "Hey, get out of here," but we thought, what if we could do something better? What if the people who are participating in our programs had a way to refer, politely refer, these kind of applicants back over to Motherlode Job Training? So while it's not a complex process, we've created a flyer that they hand out, tells them the, the potential employee about the benefits of Motherlode Job Training, and sends them away with a positive instead of a negative. We've encouraged such businesses to tell these applicants, "You go through the process and come on back properly prepared, and I can't guarantee a job, but I sure will promise you an interview." So we thought that's a real win-win for everybody involved. Our interviews also revealed that business operators don't even have the time to take online classes, they don't know where to go to get additional education on running their businesses, to learn better business practices, so we're bringing the education to them in small segments. First of all, we partnered with Delta College Small Business Development Center to bring their classes to Calaveras County starting later this year. They already have professionals who lead workshops in special areas, so we're just going to get it here into this county, and starting next year, we'll even get some funding to support that. We're also in the early stages of creating a Calaveras Employer Assistance Program, from which subject matter experts will deliver onsite consulting to businesses at no charge. And of great notice, last month, we launched our first in a series of workshops, where veterans of corporate America facilitate 90- to 120-minute courses on subjects including customer service skills, how to write a business plan, sales and marketing, and more. The customer service workshop we held was facilitated by Dennis Mills, and it is already in demand for onsite delivery to larger businesses and even the county itself. In the area of marketing and advertising, here's what we're finding, if the business isn't on Main Street, consumers don't know where they are. If the business name doesn't reveal what they do, then the customer may go somewhere else. An example of that is Cinder's Market, who would know that, you know, they have lumber and hardware? Market 49 in Angels Camp, how do you know that that's a restaurant? Consumers, we find, anecdotally, yes, they want to shop locally, but if they don't know where to buy something in Calaveras County, they're going to spend their money somewhere else, either online, or they're going to cross the county borders. We thought there's a solution to that, and it has to, it relates to the changing consumer trends with the internet. What started off as people using the internet to shop with amazon.com from their home PC over 10 years ago, has now turned to where people pull out their smartphone, and because it knows where they are with the, the geospatial thing, where they know exactly where they are, they search for something, and if it's found on the internet, it knows where they are. But let me show you what happens when you try to do that for some of our Calaveras businesses. Let's go to Google and search for hiking boots in San Andreas. If I was on a smart device, it would already know where I am. Let's make that boots with one S. So here's the search, and let's try that again. Okay, here's our results. And you don't see any local stores popping up. All the way down, they're not appearing. What if instead, there was an alternate place to get your Calaveras goods and services? I'd like to introduce you to shopcalaveras.com, a website that the EDC created specifically for this. This site was designed to work on any device, if you put it on a smartphone, it reconfigures, it reformats. If you put it on a smartphone, it reconfigures, it reformats. We show featured businesses, which keep changing every time you refresh the page. And when you search for hiking boots here from San, well, I don't have to even say San Andreas, because I'm a local person in the county using this. It brings up two stores that sell hiking boots. The closest one is Murphy's. Now I don't have to go to Big Five in Jackson on that windy road. In probably a little bit less time, I can get to Murphy's, do some shopping there. Here's the full-blown page that we give to every participating business with the EDC's new program. They get a full page describing their business, plenty of text as they wish, one photo, and an interactive map. What's neat about the map is that it can actually give you directions. So if we were on a smart device, we'd actually get the full directions, but it zeroes right in, fully interactive. Opened it up in a separate tab, so the user did not lose the page. This is the biggest benefit we can bring to small businesses who have no presence on the Internet, or if they do. For example, Snack has their own website, but it didn't show up in the search results. We pull this off because of the way we use keywords that are hidden. They don't appear on the screen, but the merchant gives us up to 1,000 keywords, and then when people shop, like they do on Google, not by category, but by keyword, they find what they're looking for. We also have this available now as an app. We have it at the Google Play Store for Android phones, and we're working on it for Apple iOS products. So that's what we've done for our small businesses. What do you think about that?
Good.
I got a question for you. I got a question for you.
Go ahead.
So if you were to type in in Google, hiking boots, Calaveras, does the shop Calaveras come up?
It probably won't yet, because we don't have that larger presence. We've got less than two dozen business members on there in our beta period here. Once we have businesses represented in pretty much every logical retail category and service category, then we intend to use some of our funds to do a very aggressive marketing campaign to educate consumers. You saw the little frogs moving around, different pictures with flowers or wine and all. We're going to print up like the little Realtors signs and start planting them all around the county to alert people to go to shopcalaveras.com. But first things first, we need to get some support on that. So that is, that's what we've accomplished with this here. Let me go ahead and take you on to our so-called value proposition. What is the payoff when needs are satisfied? The small businesses' needs that we've covered. How do we all benefit when Calaveras businesses are more successful? Well, first of all, county residents get what they need in less time and with less effort. Our struggling businesses get stronger, and they retain their employees. When businesses grow, they hire more employees. And what does it mean to the county budget when consumers spend more money here? Well, a business that sells more results in greater sales tax revenue. And at that point, each 1% growth in sales tax for this county brings upwards of $20,000 a year. So imagine what 5% or 10% increase in local sales and local sales tax would bring to the county. Everybody benefits, because they're spending more money in Calaveras instead of online, or going to Sonora or Jackson, Stockton. With that, I want to turn it over to Dave. Nope, skipped a slide. I'm sorry. We had this worked out. You're probably wondering right now what you can do to help us be more successful, and the answer is simple: spread the word. As you visit the small businesses throughout your districts, tell them about the EDC. Tell them about the benefits, the consulting services, shopcalaveras.com. When you meet highly qualified people who might enjoy facilitating workshops or providing consulting services, send them our way. We're a modest group of volunteers. We have limited resources, but our commitment to helping our community's economic future is virtually unlimited. Dave?
That's the next slide.
Okay. So we wanted to take this moment too, just to acknowledge we have this group of contributors up here that comes, almost all of them being saying it's done a lot of work to help us out in this. You know, Marty Crane, Bob Dean, Cooper Beiser Edson, Frank Patitski, Dennis Mills, Vicky Mills, Brian Turksberry, and Susan Thomasich back there. We want to make sure that they all got acknowledged. This is a all-volunteer organization. It's a team effort, and we also take this point to tell everybody that everybody's welcome at our meeting, which is every second Wednesday, the Mark Twain Medical Center at 2:00 PM of the month. We need more volunteers to help us accomplish what we want to. We practice what we preach about being on the Internet and being found. These are some of the ways that you can contact us via, visit the website. We've got a phone that's answering, that has an answering service on it 24/7. You can call 844 via gold, and we get a text message immediately into our mailbox with your recording on it. Email, we have a Facebook page, and our meetings every second Wednesday at 2:00 PM. So we really thank you for taking the time today to listen to the presentation, and we really look forward to working for you in the future and keeping and collaborating more. And any ideas that you've got, you know, that you think we'd be good at executing, please bring them to us, because we're looking for all the help we can get. It's going to take a while to get all this done. We can't do it without everybody's help. It's not a singular effort. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So there's another person that should be mentioned, Sandy Metrite.
Right, yes, thank you. Yeah. Exactly. So the ready office gets started.
She came in, did a swat exercise to identify the priorities for economic development in the county, right at the very beginning, so that was really great.
She did. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for coming today.
Do you have any questions?
I was just going to ask that.
Hi. I know both these gentlemen from the Arnold area, and they're doing a very fine job. But there are some questions that need to be asked, and I'm your friend, just to make sure that we get that established. What does it cost a business to become part of your organization?
That's a great question. I'm sorry I didn't answer it already. Most of the services we've talked about, we provide at no charge. Just give us a call. Anything that's just a phone call, some consulting, we've even got, we had no charge for our first class on customer service skills. We wanted to see how it worked out, and we're getting great feedback. It does cost us something for the website. We've already invested thousands and thousands of dollars in the design of this and doing it right, making it Google compliant for the new, what they call responsive design. If you don't have that, you won't show up in the search results anymore on Google since April. So, yeah, we've invested a lot. And to answer your question, we charge only 240 a year to have full benefits as a participating business. And if somebody wants to join mid-year, then it's prorated. Just that simple. So it just renews in January. So it's real easy to get started. We want to thank people like Cliff Edson for Country Cliffs, Mark Borchen for the Glass Doctor of the Gold Country, over in Murphy's, Jim from Gold Electric. We've had a lot of people who've, you know, attend, the kind of people who are out and about in the community, and they're supporting us. We just need your support now to help us find, you know, connect with other businesses that need us.
Inherent to District 3, my district and our district, we have a lot of part-time residents, mostly from the Bay Area, some from the Sacramento Valley area. And most of the inquiries from those taxpayers are, "Where can I get a contractor? Where can I go buy a pair of underwear, a pair of socks? Or where's a good restaurant? Where's the information like this?" Our residents in District 3 are pretty much set in stone as far as their purchasing power and where they go to buy things. What's the plan, if you have one, and I'm sure you do, to reach our part-time residents in those locations who ask those questions when they come up to visit their vacation home or things of that sort?
It's consistent with the rest of our plan. Those folks do use the Internet. They do read the pine tree.net. We will be advertising in the electronic and news media, and of course, also with the, particularly to District 3 and the Arnold area with, where we have roughly 25% of the cabins are occupied year-round. Well, those other 75% can learn through their homeowner associations, because this is a benefit to them.
I want to say tonight, we should acknowledge the Calaveras Enterprise has given us 800 words every two weeks, so we'll be using that to get the word out. That'll be 25 times a year that we'll have an article appear in there that'll be about economic development. So we're going to use that forum, and as Bob said, the pine tree, our own website, our Facebook page, reaching out through all the channels. It, as you know, it just takes time, right, to get the word out there, to become part of the conversation. We have to be part of the community and the conversation. And we're doing this. This is also an effort to get the word out.
Good answers, gentlemen. I actually sit on the board for the Tuolumne County Economic Development Department. And I understand you work very closely with the folks over there.
Very close.
Great program. I tell you, it's on a kickoff. They've done a lot of hard work developing this. The past has not been real successful, but I think these two gentlemen and the board and volunteers are on the right track. So I think we should really push hard to promote this.
That's what it'll take, and consistency. Thanks. Anything else?
Other questions?
I just have some comments. You know, I want to thank you and commend you for all of the efforts that have gone into this thus far. I know EDC was defunct for several years, and, you know, a core group of people here are bringing it together to where it is now. It's been a process, probably a good three, four-year process to get to where you are now and becoming what I consider your public, your public announcement of EDC. And I was fortunate enough here earlier this year to attend one of the meetings at your invitation with, I don't know if it's Larry Cope and EDC professionals, and really liked the focus of, you know, there's so many things with EDC, and people just think, "Go get the big box and problems will be solved." I really like what you went through, the door-to-door campaign, you might say, in the San Andreas area, to really find out what small business owners are needing, and then developing services related to that, instead of just throwing that aside and going after the big box. I think it'll be years, if ever, a big box is here in Calaveras County. It's really submorning our small business in growth and expansion, sustainability, and, you know, perhaps the big box comes down the line, but for now, it's really supporting our local businesses and help them grow, because they are here. And how can we add another employee, or adding another line of service, or anything along those lines? So I really appreciate the effort. I know it's a lot of time and energy on many volunteers. The brochure looks great. The logo is catching, and I ask you to leave me several hundred of these, so as I'm in my district, I can start delivering this to the businesses in District 4.
We'll get those for you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, guys?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Not yet.
Thank you, John.
Public comments?
Bob? Yes, please.
I have a luxury I need to give to any one of you guys. Okay, thank you. You answered my question about how long you existed, so I can't blame any of the prior economical screw-up. You identified the donors, and majority of them, I have great respect and trust. You told me how bad the economy is. Unemployment's going down, but nobody's bragging about labor participation in this county or this state. You mentioned, you were very polite about it. Nobody talked about it. How much does it cost to start up a business in this county, folks?
Could you repeat the question one more time?
How much does it cost for somebody to start a professional business in this county?
Actually, it costs a lot of money, no matter where you're at.
I don't care. I'm talking about this county. You're responsible for this county. I don't care what Tuolumne or Amador County's charging. What do you do to change it?
I don't think anybody knows exactly. That's a broad question.
Yeah, okay. I agree with you. It's ridiculous. Now, this county, your staff can function very quickly, and I seen it before you folks got on there. Two days, the fiber optic company, got to go ahead and do it. Remember? The fiber optic that came in? It was emergency. A movie company came in, planning department, two days, they got it done. So either get them to get off their butt and do it quickly, or get another people in there. Thank you. You're complaining about schools, but I didn't hear how much you're going to cooperate with schools if you can have, and I'm sure you can arrange it. Going to school and tell kids, "Hey, you have to know the multiplication table." You know, if you're a smartass, you're not going to stay in business too long. It's not your fault, it's not their fault. Maybe somebody look at the schools, what products they're putting out. It's, you're going to offend schools. You're not supposed to. But the product our education system put out there is pathetic. Folks, reach out to the veterans. Financially, it's a great asset. Make an effort. The feds will cover, the longer they've been unemployed, the bigger chunk of federal money you're going to get. We do have a whole bunch of veterans in this county. And I don't think we either treat them, make an effort to treat them with the full respect and consideration we should give them. So, I mean, Health and Human Services, they don't realize we have 6,000 or 7,000 veterans in this county, even, well, I don't want to go into that direction.
Please let me use the last part of your, the last part of your five minutes to respond, please.
I'll tell you what. I'll give you whatever is left, it's yours.
Okay. First of all, veterans, Motherlode Job Training has special services to assist veterans. And as far as our schools, yes, we all know what it's like to go into a convenience store, and they can't figure out the change, but we have some of the best schools around. The Bret Hart School District was ranked fifth out of 375 districts in California by a third-party organization that looks at not only SAT scores and what percent go to college and dropout rates, but they also look at the cost of living to be in that school district. So we are very fortunate to have so many good things going for us in Calaveras. And while we, I totally respect your position that there's things that need to be improved, at the same time, we think we have more success by focusing on the things that are working and making them even better. So thank you very much for your comments.
All right. Any other public comments? Don't be shy, you just got to get up and board forward.
Come on, yeah.
One more line, obviously.
Marty Crane. Since we brought up our schools, and thank you for highlighting the things happening at Bret Hart. Calaveras Unified has been working for a couple of years now, and we're expanding it as well, the civic engagement program. Cliff knows all about this as well. And so we're very excited about helping our students become more engaged in their community and then learning more of the soft skills that are necessary when they go out into the business world. So I'm very excited, I think, everybody, please, do like Debbie said, take a handful of those. Get the word out there. Building the economy is a very thoughtful process, and it requires all of us to interact. So thank you.
Vicky Mills. I just wanted to add one thing. The EDC is working with Chamber of Commerce and Calaveras County Women's Network to put on a symposium out at the fairgrounds with classes and various booths, September 28th, and it's really a great thing. I've been involved with the ones that the Women's Network in Tuolumne County did when I was working over there, and I am really glad to see it happening in this county. This is a first, and hopefully, first of many. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Board Members, I'd just like to say one real quick thing. Could you use a Calaveras frog? Could you use a Calaveras frog, please?
I said three frogs.
Thank you. It's an import, right?
That's right. Well, that's all. Thanks a lot for having us here today.
All right. Hey, I just wanted to- All right, hey, I just wanted to say. So we got some good things happening. We just need participation and people coming forward and get involved, get engaged. All right, so we have number 11 on our regular agenda. Planning, staff recommends, the Board of Supervisors signs a resolution approving Planning Commission action to grant the General Plan Amendment 2014-030 based upon the findings included here therein.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Mauer, Planning Director. I think it'd be important that we open up all three of the next items, 11, 12, and 13. They're all related to the same project, three different actions associated with the
So 11 through 14 are all?
11, 12, and 13?
11, 12, and 13.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's 11, 12, and 13.
All right.
Dave?
All right, we'll do that.
Okay. So with that, we have the Planning Commission recommendation to approve a general plan amendment from industrial to commercial for a portion of this property in Valley Springs. And two appeals, one appeal of the denial of a zone change application for the same property from C2 to CP, professional office commercial, and the denial of an administrative use permit for a medical marijuana dispensary.
I can't hear you.
Try to speak closer to the microphone, sorry. Brief history, a business license was issued for a dispensary without us knowing that it actually was a dispensary. There was some discussion about that, but it's really sort of moot to the point or not really germane to the issues before us today is that we have a zone change administrative use permit application. An enforcement action was undertaken after it was discovered that it was operating without the appropriate permits. And about a year and a half ago, there was an appeal before you for another zone change. It was my first week here on the job, and I met with the applicant and his representative and suggested there might be another alternative because a proposal that was before the Board at that time would not have solved the problem that he was facing as far as appropriate zoning for an administrative use permit for a dispensary. The recommendation was, or suggestion was, that a portion of the property be rezoned to accommodate the dispensary. Dispensaries are only allowed in Calaveras County in the CP professional office zone. And as we worked through the process, we discovered that, oh, there's also an issue with some, with the general plan, it doesn't correlate exactly with the zoning. That was a fix that was, we made at the same time. Because if the property on which the existing dispensary is located on is zone commercial but shows a general plan land use designation of industrial. So that was the one item that the Planning Commission recommended approval of to clean up that discrepancy with the land use map. When we first suggested this plan of action to address the concern of appropriate zoning, it seemed like a reasonable suggestion at the time. Of course, there's no guarantee, it's a legislative act, it's ultimately up to the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors to approve any kind of zone change, but it seemed reasonable at the time. What we have subsequently discovered is we've had a number of applications, similar applications for rezoning of a portion of a piece of property for, to professional office to accommodate either an existing or proposed dispensary. It appeared to us, our interpretation of the code, when the Board adopted it in 2005, I believe, maybe it was 2010, I don't remember the exact year it was adopted, was that the intent of the Board was to limit the numbers of dispensaries we had in the county by limiting their locations to only those, to only the professional office zone. It's one of the most limited zones in the county, and it appeared to us that the intent of the Board at that time in adopting that ordinance was they didn't want to see proliferation of dispensaries throughout the county. And so they limited their location to the CP zone. We've since had half a dozen at least applications, some of which are in process, some of which have been withdrawn for other reasons for that. And our recommendation to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission's action on the zoning, was based on the belief that it was the intent of the Board, that we did not want to see a large number of dispensaries. And to just rezone property for the sole purpose of putting in a dispensary, seen a fly in the face of good planning and, you know, good, you know, the use of zoning as a tool to direct uses to certain locations. It raises the issue of spot zoning and split zoning, which is something that the county has discouraged in the past, although it's certainly not illegal or prohibited. There's just a question of whether or not zoning a piece of property for a specific use without looking at all the other uses that might or might not be allowed in that location doesn't always make sense. That being said, this location is probably not a bad location for a dispensary. There are no other incompatible uses nearby. And so we have mixed feelings about the recommendation for denial of that, other than what we believe to be the intent of the Board. And I think that's really what's before you today, is whether or not this is an appropriate zone, appropriate location for a professional office zone with the understanding that the purpose of the zoning is not to put in, you know, medical offices or banks or things like that, but it's to locate a medical marijuana dispensary. Because the zoning was denied, the Planning Commission had no choice but to also deny the administrative use permit because it requires a CP zone for that. Should the Board reverse the Planning Commission's determination and approve the zoning, we'd recommend that you refer it back to staff to come up with appropriate findings and to work up the conditions of approval for the administrative use permit. So we go into a little bit of detail, the map, this is located at, it's on Nov, I'm sorry, 10 Noveway in Valley Springs. It's part of a small commercial complex. There's a number of other businesses located in the complex. It is again Zone C2 currently, with the corner of the property, you know, the end of the building and the property that underlies that proposed to be rezoned, time commercial. Property surrounding it is both commercial and industrial. There's access off of Highway 26 to Noveway, and the Plaza takes direct access off of I think that's really the boat, the gist of the concerns that we have is the spot zoning and the proliferation of other zones. This essentially sets a precedent that it's okay to rezone property for a specific use. Part of the question then would be, is that appropriate for this location? And how does that then affect the other potential applications that we have in process right now, expect to have submitted to us in the future, and, you know, the whole issue of dispensaries in the county? Do you have any questions?
Questions?
Not at this time.
No. Not now. Okay, so I'd like to go to the public and get their comments on questions, okay?
Is there a presentation by the appellant? This is an appeal, by the way.
We have specific procedures. We follow that. Okay, so is there a presentation by the appellant?
Hi.
Hi.
What was it?
I'm a managing member of Novi Plaza LLC, the property owner that Forgotten Knowledge leases from and has been in there since 2010. Also, at the time, in 2010, I was also one of the directors and actually formed Forgotten Knowledge Collective. I was, I was a little confused about a few things, so if anybody can set me straight on that. I thought that the, I wasn't at the Planning Commission meeting, I thought we'd had a compromise. I was somewhat surprised when the Planning Commission, before that meeting, had kind of changed directions. Unfortunately, I didn't expect that. I was out of town. I didn't read their recommendation until about three or four days. I went in to talk to Peter, and it was kind of short notice, and he didn't have the opportunity to chat with me. My experience has been, though, in matters, that pretty much the Planning Commission goes along with staff recommendation. I was represented, did hire counsel, we represented, and pointed out our views. The Planning Commission decided to go with, as Peter said today. In watching the Planning Commission meeting, several things occurred to me. One, it seemed like their main issue was this whole deal of split zoning. Would that be correct, Peter, do you think? Or one of their major issues?
That was concerned, yes.
Okay. So I had brought a couple of documentations here. I had them on the board, but I can, I can hold them up. If you don't want to see them up there, I could have somebody from the audience help What would work better?
Your plan, go ahead.
What exactly do they?
These are, these are all documents that have been produced by Calaveras County.
Okay.
These are all Calaveras County.
Are there enlargements of those documents?
Yeah, so I, so everybody had the opportunity to see them. Between the Planning Commission hearing, I met with Peter, he was nice enough to meet with me a couple of times. I met with Peter on a couple of occasions. Peter, obviously, being new here, doesn't have the history and even so far as not to know who Dennis Downham was, which was a main factor in how this collective got started and the way it got started. For anybody in the ordinance that doesn't know, in 2010, Dennis Downham was the highest law enforcement officer in the county, the sheriff, okay? So anyway, I had brought it to Peter's attention, that I thought his staff's opinion of where the zoning went to, as far as M2 versus C2, was possibly erroneous, okay? Through the years, in owning this property, for about 34 years, accessory maps are changed, et cetera, et cetera. We didn't have the technology then, okay, that we have today relative to the electronic maps and everything. And we used to kind of joke about it a little bit because the way the zoning was kept track of was with colored crayons, not crayons, pencils, okay? So I always kind of would like to, every couple of years, go in and make sure that the colored pencil didn't get, didn't get moved, okay? Because it was usually the new guys that were copying the old maps, and sometimes the maps would be different, different proportion. But the thought, when the business license was applied for Forgotten Knowledge Collective, which a collective is a different, different animal than a dispensary, okay? For the collective, okay, the planning department stamped that. And there's two, two little, two little initials up here. That's not the initial of the person that stamped it. That was the zoning at the time, and that was C2 and M2, okay? So we could, we could search my records, the county could search their records, but the property was zoned in two pieces, excuse me, at the time was one pieces, it had two zoning. So it already had split zoning. So I don't quite understand, you know, we could go back and forth, share our records through the years, for the last 35 years, and look up all the zoning amendments and things and say, well, I think it's here, and I think it's there. You know, the fact of the matter was, it was, it was actually 90 feet into the shopping center building was still M2, okay? In the agreement that we worked out with Peter and county council, and we discussed where to put that line, we decided not to split a particular unit, but to put it right on the wall, which I think was 100 feet instead of the 90 feet. But, you know, I just, just wanted to make everybody aware that it was, sure, certain.
Mr. Mauer, is this, that information correct so far?
Yes, the zoning previously, the partial did have split zoning based on some, you know, old mapping issues. I'm not sure how it got that way, but that's, that's accurate, there was.
Excellent, thank you.
Split zoning.
Now, let me diverge a little bit. I have some notes, and mainly I wrote notes for myself. Not that I need a teleprompter, but I don't want this to go on for tens and hundreds of hours to give the whole history of all of these things. In 2009, I was visiting my, my mother, and I'm gonna give you a picture of her because she's wearing a shirt, and my mother was very involved in issues.
Can I ask the question?
Sure.
Did you present those at the, at the underlying hearing?
At which?
Was that evidence in the underlying hearing?
That's no evidence in anything. I'm just trying to tie in my, my reason for believing in the cause of the people that feel they should have the freedom of choice to use marijuana for their medical needs.
I just want to make the chair aware that, under these proceedings, technically, issues that were not raised at the Planning Commission should not be considered.
If you would like me to take those pictures back of my mother, I'd be happy to do that.
Can I just, I'd just like to clarify, just to give the board some direction directly from the code, under 1798-070B, which is the procedures for an appeal from the Planning Commission to the Board. I'm gonna read the full text of that code so the Board understands what its options are. "No issue which was not addressed during the hearing upon which the appeal is based shall be part of the appeal hearing. All relevant and known facts must be presented to Planning Department staff and the Planning Commission. In the event that new information is presented on appeal, the Board of Supervisors shall have discretion to remand the project to the Planning Commission for consideration of new facts or issues." So to the extent that the Board does choose to exercise its discretion about whether or not to accept information that is relevant and was not presented to the Planning Commission, if it is substantial new information, the Board should at that point send it back to the Planning Commission for more consideration. The Board has discretion to determine the weight and the relevance of the information being presented or whether it wants to consider it if it hasn't been presented below.
In English, that means that if there's new information here, you can't make a decision based on it. You have to send it back to the Planning Commission. If it's a new information that's substantial and relevant.
I got a question, then. On the Planning Commission, the use of medical marijuana was not addressed? Benefits of it, cons of it?
It was not raised by the applicant's representative. As Mr. Myers stated, he was not there. There was some discussion from the public on pros and cons of medical marijuana.
Right.
It was not part of the Planning Commission's action, part of their findings.
But it was part of the hearing, because the public raised it.
The public did raise it.
Yeah.
I'll let Mr. Foley take over from there.
You know, this is an interesting
You know, this is an interesting issue because if you read your staff report, there's new information that's in the staff report that was not before the Planning Commission. And we responded to that by giving you a handout last night, which I hope you got, the Declaration of Guy Myers. We delivered to the...
Well, yeah, we did get that last night.
All right. Well, we, we put that in there because the staff report contained new information that wasn't in the report to the Planning Commission. And that was the information about the additional writings on the business license application. And that's what we presented in our handout with Mr. Myers' declaration, which I have the original of for the clerk to the Board. And so if we're going to start drawing lines in the sand, I think you're going to have to go back and rewrite the staff report, which contains new material. Otherwise, we're not going to get due process because you're not going to let us respond to something new that was put in the report for the Board.
I mean, for me personally, Chair, you know, to discuss the benefits of medical marijuana seems to be relevant to, you know, that was brought up in the, the Planning Commission. So for Guy to, to talk about, kind of give background on where everything was, seems to be a fairly reasonable thing to do. I mean, it'd be, seems simpler, instead of just letting him talk about his mom for a few minutes, we're now in the weeds right now and spending a lot more time and energy on just sort of letting him talk. I mean, that would be my, my opinion would be just to let him continue, let Guy continue on his path and as, as he was.
Can I call for a point of order, Mr. Chair, and ask that we take like a two or three-minute break so that we can look at this document? Because it's fairly likely and, and we're being asked if new information is presented, and frankly, I don't know whether it is or not, if this was handed to you.
Yeah, I haven't read it yet because we, we, I know we received it last night, but we didn't get it till this morning.
I, I, you know, I just did the best we could to have it dropped off at the, your office. I realize that could happen. Historically, things would get dropped off the day before Board hearings all the time. So I apologize for that, that late delivery. But there is new stuff in the staff report that we felt had to be responded to, which is in Mr. Myers' declaration, the original, which, if I could, I'd like to give to the clerk, to the Board. And that would be...
It'll be fine.
Is that all right?
I'm going to ask you if we should continue this for later on during the day, give you some time to look over this stuff.
Or you can take it research right now.
Well, we don't, that's not enough time to do it. We, I don't want to stop our meeting.
Okay, sure, sure, we can do that.
So that's, you know, in light of all this new material, I would like to move this to later on during our agenda so that it gives our County Council to, to inform us on what's new and what isn't, to tell you the truth, and also our, our Planning Department, because I don't think any of us were at that planning meeting. So we are only, you know, we only get what comes to us through the Planning Department as a presentation and through County Council. I'm sure that you didn't see this, have you, Peter?
Oh, I did receive it yesterday. I did have a chance to read it.
Yeah, so I think that's probably the most fair way to do it so that we can all be on the same page when we start discussing this. Right now, we're, it's a little bit, it's a little bit far-reaching for us to say that, that we're all on the same page. Okay, so I would like to...
What time would you think, because it looked like you had a pretty heavy...
It'd be better if you set a time.
So how about we set, set it for 1:00. That should give us enough time.
Do you think that early lunch where your staff can get a point would you get?
We will do our best, Peter. Yeah.
Oh, you fantastic.
We'll do our best, man. So 1:00, we'll continue this one, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah.
2:30, no.
Don't want to have an issue.
Take somebody else.
Oh, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. What do you think, Ken?
What's that?
They want a copy of it, too.
Oh, I have a few extra copies. I'll be happy to ship the ones I have out.
All right. So we're going to move on to agenda item number 14. Oh, you guys didn't have to go anywhere. So Planning recommended Board of Supervisors disestablish agricultural preserve number 49 and approve application 2015-015, establishing agricultural preserve number 337 for Lawrence and Francis Fuchs, and approve application 2015-dash-022, establishing agricultural preserve number 338 for Betty. Boy, you've got some good names here. Cuciante, and is that right, Cuciante?
Yes.
All right, good. And Carol Urbani?
Yes.
All right. I can't, I can't decipher words. That's good. Go ahead, Jean.
I think I can simplify this, so let's talk ag preserve. We're actually going to discuss items 14 through 18 all at once because they are directly related, although we do have to take technically separate action. But it really all is one big package. So originally, we're talking about two separate ag preserves. Family's name is Santos. The first ag preserve is originally ag preserve number 62, if you will, 247.54 acres, established back in February of 1971. Adjacent to that, but separated by a non-ag preserve parcel, is original ag preserve contract number 49. 304 acres, point seven, 304.71 acres, also established in 1971. Breaking it down, we've got two separate ag preserves. The land within the ag preserves or within the original trust is now being distributed to the trustees of the trust. So we have original ag preserve contract number 62, which is basically being divided in half, if you will, two new proposed ag preserves for the trustees. On the other side, ag preserve number 49, same situation, being divided up amongst the, the members of the, of the trust, the trustees, if you will, and that also will be divided up into two new ag preserves. With the establishment of the new ag preserves, you will be basically disestablishing the original contracts, number 49 and 62. Over on the, on the side of original contract number 49, we have a few new, a few additional entitlements, if you will, that we need to address in addition to the disestablishment and the new establishment of the ag preserves. In order to get where they are today, in terms of boundaries, they had to do a lotline adjustment. And a portion of the, of the ag preserve land is being merged with a portion of non-ag preserve land. As a result of the lotline adjustment, you, the Board, must make seven findings to approve the lotline adjustment because the land is within the ag preserve. That's included in your packet, a separate resolution. Because we're merging land that is not in the ag preserve, we must rezone that portion of land. That's approximately 80 acres. It would, it's being proposed to go from unclassified to AP for the purpose of the Williamson Act. That is also ordinance that is in your packet. So in relation to the original ag preserve 49, we've got a disestablishment of the original contract 49, establishment of two new contracts, which would be 337 and 338. We have a resolution to approve or make findings for the lotline adjustment and an ordinance to approve the zoning that goes along with the Williamson Act or AKA ag preserve. On the other side, we're similar situation, disestablishment of original contract 62, breaking it up into two separate contracts amongst the trustees, and that will be the establishment of ag preserve number 339 and ag preserve number 336, all of which meets the minimum requirements for an ag preserve. They're meeting, they're demonstrating that the land has the ability to meet the minimum $2,000 annual income from the production. They're meeting all the minimum requirements for acreage in the ag preserve. The past history on the property for the, the two original ag preserves demonstrates that they have well exceeded the annual income requirements for the production. It's in cattle production now. It's going to stay in cattle production. The only difference is we must distribute the land in title to the trustees of the trust.
Okay.
Very good.
I actually, I actually understood that.
Good. Because the packet, I'm sure, is a little confusing. I promise the next one will be better.
You go round and round with it, you know? All right. So, anything else?
No, not unless you have questions.
Any questions from the public or comments? Okay, Board?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Okay, all in, motion by Supervisor Wright, second by Supervisor Kearney. I did. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So it's 5-0. That was on...
Thank you.
14.
That was on 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18.
We, we have to take separate action on each one?
Yes, you should.
That was 14.
Okay, that was 14?
Yeah. So that was recommended the Board of Supervisors disestablish agricultural preserve number 49 and approve application 2015-dash-022, establishing agricultural preserve number 338 for Betty Cucianni. Cucianni, right? Cucianni. And Carol Urbani, okay? So number 15, Planning recommended the Board Supervisors disestablish agricultural preserve number 49 and approve application 2015-dash-015, establishing agricultural preserve number 337 for Lawrence and Francis Fuchs, and approve application 2015-dash-22, establishing agricultural preserve number 338 for Betty Cucianni and Carol Urbani. Have a motion on that, please? Before we do that, any public comments on this one?
Can I have a quick question?
Yeah, it's public comment time.
The principals that are involved in this, they all for it. I got the impression nobody's fighting it. Landowners...
You haven't seen anybody come up and...
No, they made the application to the county.
Okay. Go for it, one thing. Another question is, by classification, they will get a tax break, right?
Correct.
The property is going to be rezoned, so they will get that.
They're currently receiving the benefits of an ag preserve or Williamson Act, and they will continue to with approval of the new establishment of the contract.
Okay. My next question about the Williamson Act. Is the state still giving you money for the Williamson Act, or is it going to come out of general fund? Thank you.
We are not receiving some pension money from the state for the Williamson Act at this time.
What about my second question? Is it coming out of general fund?
It, it just reduces the amount of the property tax paid on the property.
All sense of right. Thank you.
But not just the general fund, the overall tax base. So it's not just the general fund. Everything received. And then there's the benefit of, of, you know, producing agricultural products and, you know, the hope that, that can increase, which is a very good benefit. All right, so any other public comments? Comments from the Board?
No.
Somebody want to make a motion on this?
Two.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I second the motion.
All right, so we have a motion by Supervisor Wright, second by Supervisor Kearney. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moves forward 5-0. Number 16, disestablish the boundary of agricultural preserve number 62 and simultaneously establish two agricultural preserves, number 336 and 339. Any public comments on this? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second the motion.
So we have a motion by Supervisor Wright, second by Supervisor Kearney. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So that's 5-0. All right, so we have number 17. Approve 2015-dash-014 zoning amendment from unclassified to ag preserve, or agricultural preserve for Lawrence and Francis Fuchs. Any public comments? Board?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I second the motion.
So we have a motion by Supervisor Wright and a second by Supervisor Kearney. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So it's 5-0, moving forward. Number 18, LLA?
Lotline adjustment, sorry.
You planning people. A lotline adjustment, 15-dash-01 for Fuchs, Cucianni, Urbani, ag preserves 337 and 38. Any public comments on that? Any Board comments?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I second the motion.
So we have a motion by Supervisor Wright, second by Supervisor Kearney. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's 5-0. Good job, guys. I was trying to hurry it up so you wouldn't be bored so long. So, thank you, you guys.
Thank you.
All right.
Should all the planning departments be so easy, right?
Well, you know, we just, we just delayed one that we're going to come back to, so. All right, number 19. Thank you, guys. Number 19, approve amendment number five to the professional services agreement between Calaveras County and Gambie disposal incorporated for the operation of the county's solid waste transfer station system, providing more modifications to the scope of work and annual compensation for the remaining life of the agreement, December 31st, 2019. Mr. Crowitz?
Thank you, Jeff Crowitz, Public Works Director. This is, again, we're hoping the last amendment to the contract with Gambie for the operation of the county's transfer stations, as well as some additional contract hauling that we occasionally need for moving materials. Slight increase to the scope of work having to do with weed abatement and control at the transfer stations. And it also predicts some cost of living increases for the next four years. And that's basically the gist of the amendment. Any questions on this?
Questions from the Board here on this?
No.
Okay. Can I have public comments or questions, please?
I'm just expressing my personal feeling and the people you do in business with. As far as solid waste, I got no complaint against them. It's great people. What I have a problem with is that there's more than one solid waste organization in this county. I don't know if the volume make any difference because you got one agency down the street that handling their solid waste. You got public works handling solid waste. There's difference in cost and so on. Whoever's doing it cheaper, more efficiently, you got administration costs on each one of them. And I'm not questioning if they watered or not. But you got more than one solid waste organization in this county. Now, as far as I'm concerned, what I can see, I met the gentleman who's doing the solid waste for the county. I trust him. I think I respect him, and I have great faith in him. And I'm sure I eventually I'm going to, this gentleman from your public works will have the same, I have a same feeling for him. But you got more organizations... But you got more organization, more administration, more administration cost, and your constituents paying, okay, for whatever area you're in. If we call, remember that, somebody won't hear you. Murphy's had a problem with solid waste, and they want a general fund to help them? Maybe they need it, maybe they're not. But after talking with the Public Works after a couple of months, he told me, well, we're gonna charge them the same as we been charging everybody else. Is that different rate, you getting solid waste? You know, that's, that's a little mercury there. So, I'm not against this, support him, but please, there's too many people hauling some manure around here, and it's not just Public Works. And, but whoever paying is your constituents. So please look into it. Between CCWD and you guys, it's still property tax, or whatever, your constituents paying for it. Hopefully you can do some of the streamlining. I don't care about turf or, or, you know, but, need something to look at. Thank you.
Nice, Peter. Okay, any other public comments? Alright, I'll let, you know, Steve Kearney, Supervisor Kearney is on the Solid Waste Task Force, probably knows more about this than I do, I'm pretty sure. So I'm gonna, I'm sure, see if he has any comments on this.
Yeah, I, I do, and I can address a lot of what Peter's asking, as well as some other thoughts, but, Public Works Director Crowitz is at the podium, so if he wants to speak first, I... Well, then, then let me go on. I, I will tell you, if you would've asked me last year at this time what I know about this issue, I probably would've felt, you know, people pick garbage up and they throw it away, and that's it, and I, it is so much more, it is so much more complicated than that, and we really, in this county, neglected addressing it for a long time. What have I learned in the last seven months? It's been a blitz, and a lot of times, like on my day off last Friday, I begged a tour from Cal Waste, Dave Vacarez, and went up to see the landfill at Truckee, and one in Sacramento, and they are doing so much more than we are doing, that it's almost unbelievable. When you go to Truckee, you can, you can take a load of yard waste and dump it, and then you go to the, the next aisle, and they load up garden bark, which is the same quality you get at Home Depot, and it's even colored if you want it that way, or, or they can get mined soil that they, that they've gotten out of junk that was dropped at the landfill, or you can get a load of logs and take it home and, and chop it up for your firewood at, at another landfill, where they take a lot of construction waste, you can get a dump load of gypsum to amend your soil if you are a farmer. So, there are so many things that are, they're light years ahead of where we are, and right now, we're trying to catch up. We also have, what I've learned about the industry is, kind of unusual situation, where we have three major players, and they all seem to get along and respect each other. And even though it might sound like it would be good to combine them, they're doing very different things, without me starting to talk about it for an hour, and Jeff is probably more of an expert on a lot of it than I am anyway, they're doing stuff that, that the one's doing something, the other one's not. And, and then there are also a few minor players that are involved in the county, too. What I, one thing that, I mean, I applaud this fact that, that we're recognizing what Gambi does in the county, but I'm concerned that it's a five-year contract. I, I really believe we need to empower Jeff to, to talk with him and look at longer contracts, and that's not the first time he's heard this from me, because I've been preaching this at him, where we have some flexibility in it, and he has a flexibility to work with him on it. And I support his, his ability to do that. We, we, we're asking a lot of these partners, I've gotten to know a good bit about what they do. Gambi, to run our transfer stations, they, they pay for the equipment at the transfer stations, we don't. I, in my business, I had a little bit of experience with a compactor, and just to get a used one, in those days, was twenty-five thousand dollars. Not to speak of the fact to have somebody come and fix it was astronomical, if something broke down. They own compactors at our facilities that are probably anywhere from twenty-five to fifty grand for them to, to run. They also have five trucks that it takes to run those transfer stations, and I asked them recently, they have to replace one of them. One truck is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So, for us to look at our partners, in my opinion, we have to, to also be willing to extend our hand and say, hey, can you stick with us for a little while while we figure some of our problems out? So, is, if I look at this, I'm gonna, I vote yes for this without even hesitating. My concern is, is five years enough? Well, maybe, but at least I want to make sure that we've got a, a Public Works Director, that my confidence grows in him day regularly, and he's got the confident, or, he has a confidence to know that, at least from solid works standpoint, I back him up on working with these vendors to, to find appropriate contracts that works for them, doesn't bankrupt them in helping us, but also helps us go forward with the things we need to do. And what we need to do in this area is mighty. If you heard his presentation at the last meeting, and then at the Solid Waste Task Force, he gave a condensed version of it, I guess that's what asked me to get a tour of a couple landfills, I was so motivated by it, because we, we do need to do things. Fortunately, he's on it, and Solid Waste Task Force is, is doing his best to support him.
May I ask one more question from the gentleman?
Right, Peter.
He had nothing to do with the bridge downstairs, did he? The one that just got collapsed? Thank you.
Okay, so, okay, go ahead.
House of Labor Taxpayer Association. I sent an email suggesting, considering contracting out the entire operation, and there, I mentioned several firms, and also commented that most jurisdictions now do contract out for efficiency, is a savings to the taxpayer, and also, it's more efficient. And I didn't get a response, and I think that planning director would, I mean, not planning director, the Director of Public Works in other communities that do contract out have a way of doing that, that's not complicated, although it would be a sea change of what we've been doing over the years, it's certainly worth looking at.
I, I can tell you, Al, that's not off the table at the, at the Solid Waste Task Force. Things of that nature have been discussed, really, even to get to that state, an agreement like this has to be supported, in my mind, because we've gotta keep our partners healthy in the process till we get to that, where, where we're at. Jeff knows more of the technical aspects of it, and, and I applaud him for getting this to us. There's a lot more work than these pages show in it, is my suspicion, and I've already told him that I support him when he does this, and I'm gonna continue to do that.
So, we are contracted out for a lot of it, that's what this is, and we have three contractors that we use currently, right? Or more. And I think that with the Solid Waste Task Force, I know that Steve is, is engaged with it, I know Jeff, why I know he's engaged with it, 'cause I walked into his office the other day, and he was like, taxed. So, I appreciate the extra effort there. I'm just trying to figure out how you got a day off on Friday, on Friday, so...
If you called, if you called touring last week a day off, so...
Debbie?
Um, I, I just, a couple of things. You know, here lately, we've had our, our issues with the Red Hill and Avery, and perhaps other sites in regards to yard waste, because of the drought, and the requirements to clear our land, and this sort of thing. So it looks like this contract makes some adjustments to allow for perhaps the expansion, or the, the better production of yard waste at particular Red Hill and Avery, and then offers some additional compensation as they're, in, in these particular areas with, is that correct?
Not entirely.
Okay.
This basically is the, this contract deals with the recycling component that offer, and the solid waste component that's coming into the landfills, and the transport of those materials either to Red Hill or to Valley Springs Recycling. And it also deals with cost of living adjustments that haven't occurred in the past, and also moving into the future. In terms of Red Hill, just for an update on that, I'm anticipating during final budget to be bringing you information of capital to improve the processing of that, of the solid, of the green waste occurring at, at the Red Hill facility, give us a little better methodology of treating it, and also to let you know, in the immediate occurrence, I've established a purchase agreement with the China Camp CoGen facility for the purchase of our green waste. So...
Yay!
That got signed today.
It's kinda off the subject, though, so...
Just one quick note, I know, I don't wanna beat this one to death. I, I viewed the videos of the last board meeting and saw our Public Works Director presentation, and to be quite honest, it scared me. I, I didn't know we were in that type of position in our bio-waste, in our solid waste. It was a very good presentation, I learned a lot, and now I am dedicated to getting more involved in it. I do know for a fact, in my district, when we had a crisis come up, the pine needle crisis, and things happened very quickly, like within hours, we had comments, we had representation from Gambi, from Cal Waste, our partners in this type of business, that stepped up to the plate of solutions, not only with their mouth, but with their checkbooks. So I think maintaining good partnerships for crises in our county is very important. We can partner with these folks, I think we've got the best people in the right positions to make this thing happen, so, thank you.
And I wanna point out, as we get back to number nineteen directly, too, that the amendments that have led to this fifth amendment, basically, these amendments were asking more of Gambi as a partner. It's, I mean, if you read them, we're, we're, we're asking them to do something additional each time, and that's kind of what led us to this point, too. It's not that, you know, that they've necessarily come to us and said, do this or do that, we're, a lot of it's what we're asking a partner to do, and that's how we've come to this stage.
Okay. And as far as partnerships go, I know that, you know, I've met with Gambi a couple of times. We have a, a real issue with separating the recyclable materials and green waste from, from our landfill. And they, I know Gambi actually put on some extra training, extra hires, things to stand out at their, at the transfer station, to, to try to get people to think about recycling, and recycling properly, and things like that. So they, you know, they do things, they respond to what we ask them to do in almost every instance that I've ever heard, so, I don't have an issue with this at all. Any other questions? Comments?
I make a motion to approve.
I second the motion.
Alright, so, I have a, a motion to approve amendment number five to professional service agreement between Calveras County and Gambi disposal for the operation of the county's solid waste transfer station system, providing modifications to the scope of work and annual compensation for the remaining of the agreement, December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. And the second by Supervisor Kearney. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. Number twenty, Public Works, conduct a public hearing and approve a resolution to adopt the attached Calveras Transit Americans with Disabilities Act Paratransit Compliance Plan. So I can open a public hearing?
Deborah Mullin from Public Works, Calveras Transit. This item is to approve ADA paratransit compliance plan. That is a requirement for public entities providing transportation and utilizing federal funds to do so. The components of this plan do not represent any new policy for any new way of doing business for Calveras Transit. We always have provided paratransit services in, in as far as deviating three-quarters of a mile off our fixed route for eligible ADA passengers. What this does is it puts all our policy and procedures together in one document for ease of distribution, and so that the federal agencies can look at that. And one of the things they wanna be certain of is that, in carrying out this policy, that we do not do things like require, have requirements about what a person's destination is, if they're eligible for the ADA paratransit, they can be going anyplace, they can use it as often as they like, we don't have a waiting list, and in carrying this out, our, our operator, paratransit services, the dispatcher, and the drivers, they make really good effort of working with people that have a need for this service. And all our transit vehicles always have ADA lifts, and are, have wheelchair positions in them. So, that's, that's generally what it is, and we're going to be bringing this policy back annually for an update or confirmation of it.
Any public comments? Public comments? Board comments?
Move to approve.
So, alright, what's that? Now?
Well, there's no public comments.
Alright, so, you know, there's rules for everything, so I have to close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back to the board for, for vote. Okay?
I move to approve.
Okay, so we have Supervisor Kearney, moving to approve.
Supervisor Olivera will second.
Supervisor Olivera, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five-zero. Alright.
And on another note, I was thinking about taking the bus down there this morning.
Yeah. Give it a week.
I've already made arrangements for...
Facility study session. How many, how long is it?
I'm in a race shop right now, being beat down.
Yeah.
Yeah. Please, take that warning on the motor.
Alright, in the interest of time, and I know that we have to come back and meet at one o'clock with the, with the, the issue that we moved to one o'clock, and then Public Works has a Public Works facility study session, we may not have time to be able to do that, and get updated on all the things we need to for our, our later discussion with the, with the planning agenda item. So, I think we'll, break for lunch, come back at one o'clock, and then after that, Jeff will do your presentation, if that's alright. Okay?